Welcome to the August 11, 2016 meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. I have the prayer and pledge tonight, so if you wouldn't mind bow on your heads. Father, we thank you for this chance that we get to come together again, the chance that we get to represent this city. Father, I thank you for the many firefighters tonight that we were able to honor with a penning ceremony, and thank you for what all of our emergency service providers do. Lord, you've blessed this community, you've blessed it with not only the many things that we have here that others don't have, that we can be thankful for, but you've blessed this community with great residents, good kids, and good families. We thank you and we love you. Amen.
Congratulations to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Douglas, you got it?
Yes, sir.
Council members, it's my privilege tonight to introduce to you a group of young men that had an exceptional year, and you know, many of us like to say that not only is Murfreesboro the capital of sports in Tennessee, but we also are title town. And so, it's my privilege to introduce the Segal Stars Men's Baseball Team that should say the state champion Segal Stars Baseball Team. So, Coach Revis, if you wouldn't mind bringing your group up. Come on up, Coach. And guys, y'all are welcome to come on up too. I think we've got Principal Creasy's here.
Come on.
Come on up, guys. Hey, and I will say this, I had to ask, I got to speak to Segal for their graduation ceremonies, and I kept seeing these stickers on cars going around that said hashtag P2BAS. I said, "P2 base," what is that? Proud to be a Segal Star. So if you guys see that going around town. Coach Revis, we have a proclamation, and then also have something else for you and your team. Whereas throughout its disciplined dedication and hard work, the Segal Stars High School Baseball Team experienced a spectacular season proudly representing Murfreesboro and Rutherford County. And whereas the Segal Stars High School Baseball Team overwhelmed the competition and posted an impressive 34-9 record. Whereas along the way, Coach Craig Revis and his coaching staff molded his team into physical and disciplined powerhouse, capturing the Region 4 AAA championship and the Class AAA State Championship for the first time in school history. And whereas the Segal Stars High School Baseball Team, along with Coach Craig Revis and his coaching staff, despite tough competition, won the District 7 AAA championship, Region 4A championship, and the Class AAA championship in storybook fashion. And whereas the Segal High School Baseball Team, along with Coach Craig Revis and his coaching staff, will forever be designated for the storybook success of 2016. Now therefore, I Shane McFarland, Mayor of the City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim August 11, 2016, is a day to recognize the Segal Stars High School Baseball Team in Murfreesboro and encourage all citizens to join me in recognizing and honoring the significant contributions, visibility, and notoriety the team and its coaches have brought to our city. And with that, we also want to present you, Coach. I'll have to say, I don't know if Coach Revis knows this, Coach Revis's dad was one of my coaches when I was in school. So his dad coached at Motlow, and so every year from Mont Eagle, we would go to Motlow, the big city of Telahoma, to be in the baseball camp, and so he was our coach. So, Coach Revis, we also want to give you guys the key to the city to go along with the proclamation and tell you thank you for the notoriety you've given to Murfreesboro.
All right. We thank you for this support.
Thank you. Coach, you're welcome, the guys you have here, you're welcome to introduce your team if you'd like to do that.
Okay, we have, I believe we have nine of them here tonight. I'm going to introduce first Larry Creasy, our principal, who's here, committed out My lead assistant Chad Fields made it out tonight. And our players, we've got Carson Simmons, who is a senior now, right? Drew Benifield, now a junior. Zach Pearson, a junior. C.J. Murray, another junior. Garrett Harvey, junior. Matt McCurry, now a junior. Seth Petry, now a junior. Tad Marks, now a junior. And we have one distinguished guest here tonight that's graduated, come back to us, Tanner Moss. So, real proud of these guys and the ones that couldn't make it, but they put together a great season, worked hard, great kids to be around. Really, cities should be proud of these kids. They get after it, work hard, and do things the right way.
Any predictions for next year?
We're gonna really enjoy this right now. We have a ring ceremony actually next week, next Thursday night at halftime of the football game, but we're gonna be in the middle of it, I'll tell you that.
Awesome. And I do want to recognize, let's see, Mr. McCurry and TJ? CJ? Neil is CJ's dad, correct? So Neil works with the city. And then Marty McCurry, who's a long-term employee at Old Fort Golf Course, that's Marty's son. So, I will tell you guys that I know we are proud of you, but you have two fine role models that work hard in this city and that we're proud of them too. So, and Coach Revis, you want to introduce your family who's here also?
Yes. My wife, Rachel, she's back here tonight, and the two young ones, Benson, where's Benson? He's a third grader now, I almost said second, third grader at McFadden. And Camden, here, he's in the First United Methodist Preschool Program. They're ready to go. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Y'all don't have to sit for the whole meeting.
No, y'all don't. Y'all.
Coach Fields, the son of the parents of six children.
Okay, yeah, great. Where's Mr. Fields?
Right there.
All right. Awesome. Thanks, Craig.
All right. Thank y'all.
All right. You have a very lengthy consent agenda in front of you.
See, the planning commission reads those, let's not do that.
I know, we don't need to do that.
You ain't doing that, are you? Mayor, unless there's objections, I'll move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Second readings. We have a letter from the City Recorder, Finance Director, and Fiscal Year 2017 Budget Amendment.
Before you consider passing this ordinance on second reading, we have amended your Exhibit A for the item that was presented by the Assistant City Manager concerning refinancing debt at our last meeting. So we went ahead and amended the schedule and put in what we'll have to do for the budget to pay off that old debt, including the interest and things that he discussed at the meeting. So what I would recommend is you make this amendment to Exhibit A, and then have another vote to approve it as amended.
We have a motion on the amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Now we'll consider for passage on second and final reading as amended, ordinance 16031, amending the 2016-2017 budget, and this is the First Amendment.
Move for pass.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. New business. We'll consider for approval of renewal certificate of compliance for Bina Patel, Manish Patel, and Kanari Patel at Stones River Liquors, 208 North Thompson Lane.
This is an annual requirement by the, no, I'm sorry, a biannual requirement by the state of Tennessee, and the application meets our requirements for your approval.
Everything in order?
It is.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider recommendations of the Assistant City Engineer regarding the purchase of three lots at the corner of Southeast Broad Street and South Church Street. Mr. Shadelson.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland, members of the City Council. Thanks for considering this tonight. We originally had this on the July 28 City Council Agenda and asked for you to defer it till our next meeting. We had a scheduling conflict with Water and Sewer Board meeting, it got pushed a week, and so we've been able to take this project to the Water and Sewer Board, and now I'd like to present it to council tonight. I'm prepared to do the 30,000-foot addition and just present the agenda item, but I'm also prepared to get a little bit in the weeds if we need to, and I have a PowerPoint presentation of about 12 slides that I'd be glad to share with you, to give you a little background and set the stage for the reason we're bringing this item tonight.
I think that'd be great.
So our proposal tonight is to purchase three parcels at the corner of Southeast Broad and South Church Street. It's really known as the KFC property, it's a very prominent corner in our community. KFC was established there late 1960s, early 1970, and the current owner, J.R.N., is a fast food franchise operator for KFC. They have several stores in the middle Tennessee area, along with other fast foods. They have a contract to sell the property to American Development Partners, who's also a fast food franchise operator in middle Tennessee, and the purchase price for that transaction is $700,000. Tonight, we're proposing an assignment contract where ADP would assign their contract to the city, and we would step in and become the purchaser. We project that that cost plus closing cost will be about $735,000 tonight. The reason we'd like to do this is we'd like to construct some improvements to Town Creek. You know, that's an 18 to a 24-month project, and by purchasing the property now, that gives us the ability to do that without difficulty to the property owners and loss of business, loss of revenue to the property owners. In that buy-sell agreement, or in that assignment of contract agreement, ADP will have a six-month option that they can exercise after we've completed our improvements to Town Creek, and they have agreed to repurchase the property at, a portion of the property at $350,000 with a $10 per square foot up or down adjustment if we decide that we need to change the size of that lot. The parcel that they would repurchase is less than half of the overall acreage, but the purchase price is more than half, or about half of the actual purchase price. A little bit of background, I'm showing a map of Town Creek here. We have South Church Street on the right side, Cannonsburg on the left side. The Town Creek conveyance goes from the back of the KFC property at Murphy Springs and then moves to the west to Cannonsburg and the discharge at, under Front Street. It's about 1,800 linear feet of pipe that was installed in the late, or middle, early 50s. And then the next map I have up for you, it actually shows the properties that we're purchasing. Parcel 1 and 2, the city plans to retain. Parcel 3 would have the repurchase option, that's the location of the current KFC building. The KFC's been closed since 2012. The current owner made a business decision not to remodel or upgrade that consistent with the KFC standards, and so they decided to close it in December of 2012. A little background, we mentioned that the culvert was constructed in the 50s, it travels through the bottoms. It was also part of really Broad Street and the work that was going on when Broad Street was constructed through the middle of town. KFC constructed and twin corrugated metal culverts were installed behind KFC in 1970. In 2007, about 45-foot section of those twin culverts collapsed. We had an expedited repair which drug on into 2008, and it cost us $450,000 to repair a 45-foot section, that's simple math, $10,000 per linear foot for that repair. A little bit steep, we'd like to do something perhaps a little cheaper here. We, following that, then we conducted engineering and video inspections of the balance of the culvert sections and revealed significant deterioration. We've installed some barricades there to help protect some of the most vulnerable areas. In 2015, this body authorized us to start a conceptual design study, and that conceptual design has been completed. And then, we've also had three developers come in and look at this property, and all three of those developers, we've run into the same hurdle. We said we were looking for a public-private partner that we could partner with to correct the infrastructure problems, and they might be able to create a development parcel out of it, and we kept coming up to the same hurdle, that they really wanted us to build their sites for them while we also repaired the storm drains, and we just never could get to a good agreement. The third developer that came through, American Development Partners, approached us with this idea that they would purchase the property, resell, sell it to us, we'd be able to complete our work, and then they would agree to repurchase that, and that's the proposal we have before you tonight. This shows us a close-up of the area we're talking about. You see the corporate logos I put on there to help explain our location with McDonald's to the north and KFC to the south, and this damaged pipe runs really between McDonald's and KFC and extends over to Church Street. Good news is that Church Street, the culvert under Church Street's in good order, but the culverts between McDonald's and KFC are in very poor repair. And we have some pictures here that show some of the details of that failure, collapsed corrugated metal, deteriorating reinforced concrete pipe sections there. And that's really the big picture, the big story here tonight is that we've got failing infrastructure, it needs our attention. This proposal would allow us to address that failing infrastructure. Here's brand-new sections, that's part of the repair segments we installed in 2007. Those are in good order and have plenty of life. Again, just maybe a concept map showing how we would approach the realignment and daylighting of Town Creek. And then this is maybe a concept of what we envision Town Creek to look like through there. Quick math on it is, we can open up about a 350-foot section of Town Creek. We'd really like to do something like this with the first phase of the project, with the ability to perhaps add some amenities, benches, walkways, picnic seats, something like that a little bit later. And then this is a conceptual design that came out of our study that you funded in 2015, and it shows the parts that we would like to open up and the parts that need to stay intact for circulation and access. So our proposal is, again, to, for ADP to assign us that contract, their purchase price and our purchase price would be $700,000. We would incur some incidental closing cost, which we've estimated to be less than $35,000. Our proposal then would be to move forward with final design and permitting of this project through the state of Tennessee, and then we'd leave the, approximately leave the KFC parcel as a parcel that could be reused, redeveloped. ADP has the six-month option with the opportunity to repurchase within the six months of the completion at $350,000, and then their plans that they've shared with us is they really intend to construct a fast food franchise of some type. They have franchise rights in middle Tennessee for probably a half a dozen different fast food franchises. What are the benefits? Well, the biggest bang for the buck is we get to deal with some damaged infrastructure. I recall taking several of you out on field trips, and we looked specifically at this area as we were reviewing the stormwater capital improvement plan several years ago. Another benefit is a portion of the land cost would actually, could be refunded to the stormwater reserves. It gives us a lot of design and construction flexibility. We're not having to work around a private business owner and avoid, you know, loss of revenue, loss of use. We've talked with Darren and Valerie at Water and Sewer and let them know that this is also an opportunity for them to take a look at their significant infrastructure. There are two large sewer lines that cross the property, and if they need attention, that'd be an opportunity for them to do rehab or upgrades. We get Town Creek daylighted. Town Creek is on the impaired water bodies list, and basically that means it's not meeting its intended water quality, and we think this project would help address that. We could do future enhancements, including the pedestrian path, benches, tables, other amenities. I think probably the thing that pushed it over the top for me was when we started looking at what we could do permitting-wise and opening up 350 linear feet of this stream, we thought about the idea of leveraging that about with Cherry Lane, and what I will tell you about Cherry Lane is we're going to have to encapsulate about the same amount of stream to complete Phase 2 of Cherry Lane. That will require permits from the state of Tennessee, and so we've already approached the state of Tennessee, and they're favorable to allowing us to substitute the stream mitigation we do with this project for the loss of stream footage that we would incur for Cherry Lane. So we're leveraging this for a couple of projects, our water quality, our bottoms area, and then also for mitigation credits for Cherry Lane. And then, if we do return that property to the private property owners, it puts it back on the tax rolls, and it also, if it develops as a retail use, creates certain sales tax revenues for us. And that's the end of my presentation. I'd be glad to entertain any questions or discussion.
Mr. Todderson, it looks like to me this is going to be the first step in the resurrection of the bottoms. You're starting at one end and working your way down.
Well, it's interesting that the Town Creek appears to be a significant element of the bottoms urban renewal, I'm sorry, the historic bottoms study, and there's a lot of interest in us creating this as a water feature, being able to use it as an amenity, being able to use it as a connection between two gems in our parks and rec system, Murphy Springs Discovery Center on the upstream end, and then Cannonsburg and the Lidle Creek Trail on the downstream end. And it is consistent with the concepts that we had presented and discussed over the last several years for the Stormwater CIP.
Thank you.
What I can tell you is that the Planning Commission considered this as a mandatory referral and recommended approval. The Water and Sewer Board considered this as funding from the stormwater utility fee and approved that as well. So we bring those recommendations to you tonight, and then we'd ask your approval on the proposal.
There's no other questions. I move we approve the recommendation, Assistant City Manager, Assistant City Engineer.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Shadelson. That was a great PowerPoint presentation, I can't think of anybody better to follow it up. Mr. Gore.
Oh, this computer's not working.
Oh, no. Sam's work.
Sam's work great.
If we get an email.
Bill, are these working?
Apparently not. See? Seemed like they were listening.
Yeah. Hey, did you get your screen all working up?
Yeah. No, then.
Y'all are lying dogs.
Not working?
It worked at 3:30, so it's gonna work here. It's like trying to beat the car.
Hold your mouth just right.
Oh, there we go.
Okay, there, see? It's just full confidence, 100% confident. Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight. Wanted to kind of take you through a little bit of a story that kind of prompted us, this is somewhat of a paradigm shift, I guess, for Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department in that we have always operated a central treatment plant and a collection system that took sewage to that central treatment plant, and we're now looking at moving into a decentralized wastewater treatment. And before we do that, we would like your endorsement and your approval of the prerequisites and the design guidelines that we would put forward. So what prompted this was a property off of Dilton-Manken Road and Manchester Pike. I got a call from Build &amp; L with the Consolidated Utility District, and they had designed this tract under step system design criteria for CUD, and it was going to be a county subdivision. And Bill thought that this was awfully close to the sanitary sewer system, and that's the property there. And he thought, why is this not going to be part of the city and connect to the sewer system? So he actually reached out to us and inquired about it. So we went out and met with site engineering consultants, met with Gary Whitaker and Sam Huddleston, and talked to the developer and said, you know, would you be incentivized if we allowed a pump station or some other alternate means to connect to the sewer system? Would that, you know, incentivize you to annex into the city? We actually talked about two different scenarios. One was, well, this is how it could be annexed, the pink is the city limits, so it would just be a short annexation line down Manchester Pike. But the first option was to put a pump station in and then pump it south. CUD actually said that they would give their eight-inch water line as a casing, or a sleeve to allow the sewage force main to be encased in that pipe. We also looked at another alternative that took a gravity section of sewer back to the north along Lidle Creek, and then again, had to pump it south. There would be a joint-use pump station, this is the Jones property that's already been permitted for a multifamily site, and it's already in the city. But after the developer looked at both of these options, they really came back and said, you know, our best business case is to do this as a decentralized step system. And then we thought, we have to figure out, well, how can we incentivize them to annex into the city and get that built to city standards and do it under a step system scenario? So, again, we kind of looked at what were the prerequisites, because we didn't want to do this all over the county. First prerequisite was, the property must be annexable or contiguous to the city limits for Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department to consider serving it. And the second one was, it must be deemed economically unfeasible to extend conventional sewer to the site. So we got with SEC and said, is there a sweet spot between what the county, CUD currently designs for the drip irrigation field and what the state requires as a minimum? And there is such a condition, CUD requires point, I know these numbers may not mean anything to you, but .15 gallon per day per square foot, it's a flux rate, it's very conservative. The state actually allows a .25 gallon per day per square foot, which is less conservative. So we asked SEC, and they recommended a .20 gallon per day per square foot with the 50% required reserve area. What this would do, it would allow more lots developed on the same tract of land versus if it was done under CUD standards. So, we brought this to the board, and we believe this is still a very conservative design guideline, and obviously, the planning- So we asked SEC and they recommended a .20 gallon per day per square foot with the 50% required reserve area. What this would do, it would allow more lots developed on the same tract of land versus if it was done under CUD standards. So we brought this to the board and we believe this is still a very conservative design guideline. And obviously, the planning department would work with the developer and it got the developer's interest and it would incentivize them into annexing this piece of property. So we did talk about next steps if this was deemed favorable by the Water and Sewer Board and the City Council. And it would require setting up a new ordinance for the rate design, which we currently propose as aligning with CUD's rate design, which is $28 per month flat fee and $2 per 1,000 gallons for any consumption. And it would also require excluding these single-family units from our system development charge or our connection fees. Since this is a self-contained onsite decentralized system, they would not be subject to our normal connection fees. So that really, in a nutshell, is the story of how this came about and prompted us into this arena. We think we've got a good plan for the prerequisites and a good plan for the design guidelines. So we would recommend approval or we would ask for your recommendation to move forward.
Mr. Gore.
Yes, sir.
This is new.
Yes, sir.
What about three months from now, eight months from now, 10 months from now? Do you think you have your regulations or guidelines in place so this won't get out of hand or it will serve the city well in the future?
Yes, well...
Especially with knowing what the legislature has done to the annexation areas?
Yes, sir. And I think that's what's going to keep control of us getting too far extending out with this type of solution in multiple scenarios is it's got to be an annexable site and it's got to be an annexable site that really is deemed economically unfeasible to extend gravity sewer to it. And there's very few places like this. So I don't see it happening very often or very frequently. You know, one of my board asked me, said, have you thought of all the unintended consequences of this? And I thought, well, you know, I live, breathe and sleep this stuff and sometimes it wakes me up in the middle of the night and I can't guarantee you I've thought of all the unintended consequences involved with this. But I've thought of a lot of them and I think we've got a pretty good proposal to keep this... These are tracks that are right by the city that we didn't want to see develop. We wanted to see it develop into city standards and become part of the city's tax base.
Good.
Mr. Gore.
Yes, sir.
What kind of density will it allow? You said, you know, we're going to increase the flow.
It's only going to allow a few more lots because we're just talking, it reduces, it effectively reduces the size of the drip field by about 25% over what CUD allows. It's 300 ga, I'm not a, I can't tell you, I haven't seen the design and tell you what the lot count is, but it really only reduces the drip field by 25% over what CUD requires. And we thought that that was conservative in regards to, we do have a solution, we do have kind of the bailout option. If something does happen, we do have sewer ultimately that's going to come down through here and if we ever needed to abandon the system and connect it to the sewer, we could do so. And per CUD, they've been running these step systems for 15, 20 years and they've never even had to abandon the original drip field and get into the reserve area. So we feel pretty good about it.
Couple of other questions came to my mind is that, I mean, as far as maintaining, you know, the maintenance type, you know, we're set up for what our system looks like. You know, are we going to have to have new personnel, different personnel? I mean, what are the costs that are going to look like for that?
We won't need to get new personnel. Again, I've talked, we've talked really for years about this and just knowing that this was a tool in the toolkit that ultimately we would employ. But I've talked with Bill Donnell several times about it and he just said, Darren, trust, there's really, the operation and maintenance of these are just very, very simple. And we've talked about maybe we should contract with CUD for a while to say, hey, can we lean on some of your experience and your expertise and get us, let us get our legs under us? And then once we feel comfortable doing that, are you kind of training us? Then we do it solo, kind of fly solo without you. But he's assured me that it's really not rocket science. It's pretty simple and it's pipe and it's pumps and our guys, our guys know that stuff.
Last question I had was about commercial uses for something like this. You may have said it and I'm sorry if I missed it, but you know, that's something that's pretty important in our planning world as far as land use.
Right.
Does this open the door, I mean, as far as commercial uses and where we don't have sewer or does it not really do that?
It does, in my opinion. One of the, the area that I really thought was going to prompt us into this arena was the east side of town, Rutherford Boulevard and John Bragg Highway. There's about 600 acres there, the Dill-Rushing Line property. And they have some great acreage of soil, but they're kind of mixed all over the site. So you've got some buildable spaces and you want to reserve the good soils. I really thought that from a commercial or a land planning perspective, that area would need to really come together and master plan itself as a 600-acre commercial area. I did do some numbers on that and it showed from a residential, this was using CUD standards, but it was showing about five to six units per acre. Now, that's not apartments and that's not multifamily, but that definitely would support a strong commercial node out in that area.
Have you considered using an aerator impeller?
We look at all the options.
And I think the one thing is council members that we're not, what we're talking about doing is really not reinventing the wheel. I think CUD's first step system came on in the early 2000s.
Right.
And really, the only difference from a homeowner, you would end up having a septic tank in your yard. And so everything goes into a septic tank, hits a grinder pump and is pumped to the unit. So really, I guess, we're having to maintain if there's a pump problem or an alarm problem, so...
That's correct. And again, talking with CUD, it's just not being a chronic or a bad situation. And I think ultimately, and I told this to the board, we do that cost of service study. We would start to incorporate the step system customers into the cost of service and really see if, you know, what we're proposing as a rate is fair and equitable. And it may not, you know, we may be able to lower, charge less than what CUD is charging.
These units installed are much more expensive than buying a water cap. I mean, on, from a construction cost, I mean, these are not inexpensive, putting a septic tank in a yard and everything that goes with it. The only thing I would say is we need to make sure that we have the inspection procedures in place for electrical, all those things that have to be inspected and make sure that they're installed correctly that, because the builders install these and then we take them over. So we have to make sure that they're installed correctly.
From a construction specification standpoint, we've already gotten CUD specs and we will, I mean, I will have, and Bill may loan them or I may end up paying for them, but I'm going to have a CUD inspector out there because I want somebody that's experienced and sees where the problems can be. And obviously, we'll have a Murfreesboro Water and Sewer resident inspector alongside, but I do want somebody that's experienced to see this go in the ground.
I have one more question for you and this is actually serious. So, you know, on more than one occasion, I've, in the last two and a half years, have discussed, you know, whether there would be a development in one area of town or the other area of town that might be kind of out on the outskirts and what that development might be and whether it fits in with our land use plan and that sort of ties into whether or not we do or don't run sewer to that area. Are we, is that, you know, is that tool going to get diminished as it relates to...
Well, we're going to still run sewer. We've got several sub-basin area master plans and we've got our overall master plan and we definitely want that to go in an orderly, extended fashion out into the basin. This is really for kind of this scenario where it's close to the city limits and we really, they could have said, no, we're just going to go do the step system and we're going to stay in the county. And so really, what we were prompted to do is to say, we really want you in the city and if we give you a little bit of a, you know, let your drip field gets a little bit smaller, would you be enticed to voluntarily request annexation? And they were. So, no, I mean, the decentralized extension, I mean, the collection system as we've designed it year upon year, we're still going to, that's our primary option. This is really just a backup.
I guess one of the thoughts that's coming in my head is whether or not the qualifications, I don't remember what you call it, but basically the qualification should be, you know, there should be more as it relates to how a piece of property qualifies. I'm wondering if that shouldn't, you know, if we should, if the council should approve those or planning commission or something on a case-by-case basis, just to have another layer of making sure it doesn't get too, I mean, is there anything like that? Does that sound reasonable or not reasonable?
I think it's very reasonable if the planning commission or the council wanted to approve whether or not this particular site qualified properly for a step system.
Or any in the future is what I'm kind of talking about.
In the future, oh yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I think...
I'm comfortable with this. I'm just kind of saying the future is what's kind of got me a little...
Sure. I mean, I think we can write in the ordinance and since we're going to be doing, we'd have to do some ordinance revisions, we could put something in place that would require that any future proposed development that is interested in becoming a step inside the city customer would need to come to the planning commission and the council.
That's would be, I guess, new to that, but I...
That's just a double check, safety check.
All right. Thanks.
Any other questions?
All right, well, if there's no more questions, I'll move for approval with adding the language about passing through planning commission prior to moving forward with any further developments with this.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
We'll consider recommendations of the Assistant City Manager in regards to selection of solid waste strategic plan consultant.
While County Solid Waste Director Mac Nolan and City Solid Waste Director Joey Smith are arriving, I'll just say that we don't have a fancy PowerPoint presentation. As Joey likes to say, sometimes we're just lowly garbage men. But what we do have tonight is a recommendation for the council to hire Gershman, Brickner and Bratton as solid waste consultants. I'm hopeful that Mac's going to report that County Commission has already adopted this on their 50%. So we are 50-50 partners at this point in time with Rutherford County on making a 20-year strategic plan for disposal of municipal solid waste in the county. We have had the most fortunate of circumstances for the last 27 years with an excellent contract worked out where the city and the county received free disposal at the Middle Point landfill. The county also negotiated successfully a royalty fee for every ton that goes into Middle Point that helps fund Mac's solid waste operation. But about 15 months ago, several of you plus Mayor Burgess were instrumental in seeing that that was coming to an end. Eight to 10 years is the predicted life left at Middle Point. And while that sounds like a very long period of time, in the world of solid waste planning for a disposal site, we're already behind the power curve with that period to plan and work towards. So we've had a solid waste task force comprised of Mac and Joey and Deputy County Mayor Jeff Davidson. We drug Paul Boyer in, our new purchasing director, late into the process that has been working to prepare an RFP for a consultant that could look at the solid waste collection system as it is now in Rutherford County, do the mathematical projections through their knowledge of the solid waste industry, look at options that might be available for us and then help city and county draft a strategic plan going forward for the next 20 years. Gershman, Brickner and Bratton, GBB, a firm out of the DC suburbs, has 40 years of experience in solid waste. They've been Metro Davidson's consultant for many, many years, back as far as the thermal transfer plant. They have excellent relationships with a number of cities across the country that have used their services. The price that they quoted was $250,100. Previously, City Council and County Commission had adopted a memorandum of understanding that says we will split that cost equally. We have opted to offer Smyrna and Laverne the chance to get in in this early stage and help in the decision-making. We're still in the process of educating and negotiating with them. But if they enter the process, the city's price can only go down. Our maximum cost is the $125,050 that's been proposed by GBB. That money is currently in Joey's budget for this year. So we've got a funded consultant. We have excellent consultant, I think, on board. They plan to be here next week to begin their efforts. They'll be here two days next week to begin their study. So our recommendation to you tonight is to join with Rutherford County as 50-50 partners in Gershman, Brickner and Bratton as our solid waste strategic plan consultant.
If there's no questions, I'll move for approval.
Just one question, timeframe on the...
About a year. They actually predicted 11 months for the completion of the study.
Second. Any other questions? Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you so much. Thank you. Got a couple of reappointments and appointments just to consider for tonight if you'll look over those and then if we'll be ready to vote the next meeting. Also, would like to add a reappointment that's not on the list. We want to vote on these tonight? Okay, I'm sorry. We will be voting on these tonight. They were on the last agenda, correct? But I would like you to consider for the next meeting just as a notice reappointing Kathy Jones to the planning commission. She would like to serve again and her term is actually up, I think it was up the end of July.
We must have missed that.
Yeah. So you have to consider on the Senior Citizen Commission a reappointment of Mark Nobles and Ms. Alice Nunnery and then appointments of YT Von, Shanto Sorino, Christopher Legel and Ms. Phyllis Washington.
So move.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Epstein.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Kathy Jones will be voted next week.
Kathy will be voted next week unless anyone wants to go ahead and make a motion, do that now.
I move reappoint her to the planning commission.
Second.
Ms. Wright, motion is second.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. And I will say, Mr. Smotherman knows this, Mr. Young, I think many of us have served on the planning commission, that is really a tough position and like to watch it on TV frequently and Ms. Jones does a phenomenal job, so not afraid to ask the tough questions and you can tell that she studies what comes before. So I want to thank her for her service. Any beer permits?
Yes, Mayor, we have a couple tonight. We have a name change and corporate owner change for a convenience store at 1209 Fortress Road, which is the Franklin Road. And all they lack finishing for their approval is some building codes inspections. So we would like to approve and issue that permit once, if you approve it tonight, once they finish those building codes inspections. And additionally, there's been an ownership change for a restaurant at 1835 O'Fort Parkway. Again, it also just lacks the building codes inspection, so we recommend approval for us to issue that permit once they complete those.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Any statements?
Not tonight.
Okay, any other business for the staff or City Council?
I've got a, I've got a piece of new business here. I'd like to discuss with you guys the idea of, and I'll tell you why, but basically, discuss the idea of just putting a temporary hold, and what I would say is, that would be a period of no longer than six months on any rezoning to high-density, any new rezonings of high-density, that would be basically, in my opinion, anything over four units per acre, so, you know, RM16, RM12. To put those on hold for a term of no longer than six months while we are able to do some, basically, an impact study, the staff can work on, you know, there's, there's some concerns out there, kind of stemmed from, you know, there's some other towns around us that are starting to, to put a halt on that, and what impact that might have on us, very much like the, we kind of had the same, or a similar situation with the, the number of liquor stores, what kind of impact that might have on us here if they slow down around us. But basically, looking at the impact, you know, we hear about this stuff a lot, but we, I, I would like to see what the numbers really look like, which is, what kind of impact do they have on our infrastructure? So, you know, which, obviously, traffic, which leads to the, the safety and welfare of our community. So, not a, not a stop, not a you can't build any, but my estimation is, we have somewhere in the neighborhood of around, including this year's development, somewhere over 10,000 units already zoned to be built. We're not changing any of that, but to me, that certainly is going to leave enough, you know, certainly a six-month period where we can, or less, you know, hopefully, that will be less, but where we can look at this and say, you know, this is what impact they have, this is an area that we think is saturated, or this is an area that we don't think is saturated, you know, let our planning department really go to work and help, help guide us towards, and really help guide the Planning Commission towards, you know, what direction should we go in order to strike the right balance 10 years from now? Because these decisions are certainly going to impact that. So, that is my, my, my thought is to see if you guys will be willing to, or, you know, want to consider that.
Let me ask a couple of questions.
Yeah, yeah.
What about the stuff in the pipeline that's three-quarters done, where they, they spent $100,000 on engineering and planning and site plans and architectural plans and landscape plans and all that?
We're talking about zoning.
Talking about zoning.
We're talking about just new zonings, not talking about not building anything, just saying, hey, you know, if, if you've got a piece of property that's RS15, and you want to come in and rezone it, RM16, we're going to hold off on new rezonings only, is what my proposal is. Doesn't, not stop in building anything, that's what I'm saying.
Just zoning.
Yeah, there's 11,000 capable units to be built, and we're not changing that at all. It would just go for a temporary time period that we would say, hold on, let's do some studies and make sure any further rezonings, we do those in the right place.
Could I ask our attorney to kind of speak to this? As it's how, and if it's within our purview to do this, and then how would we do this?
Well, the, the, putting a hold on, on rezoning is something that is, from a legal standpoint, is complex, so it would take us some time to study it, but, but other, other cities in, in the courts have supported temporary, short-term holds on, on zoning or development to allow cities to, to study something. So, I, I think if, if the, if the period of time was set at the outside of six months, and we would do our study and then come back to council when that was done, not past the six months, and then have council decide what they want to do as far as changing the zoning or not, or changing the zoning code or not, I think that, that's been supported by the courts in the past in other, in other states. So, at this point, you know, it'd be council voting on instructing planning and zoning to, to hold off on bringing forward any zoning matters until, rezoning matters on high-density property until, until we get a chance to look at it as quickly as possible, no longer than six months.
So, Rob, what are the, does somebody remind me, we got, I know we've got RM12, we've got RM16, what's right underneath RM12?
Pardon me, hey, that'd be an, I think there's an RS8, but I think...
Is there anything that goes down below, I mean, that's in between, basically, what we call townhomes and...
There's a residential, there's a residential mixed-use zone, I'm not sure the density on that, Mr. LaLance. But the, most of what we see is going to be RS16, occasionally, we'll see RS12, but...
RM12?
RM12, yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, essentially, I mean, my idea was that we didn't, I didn't want it to necessarily apply to townhomes, but basically, over that, you know, what we kind of think of as townhomes.
I believe there's a, the zero-family zoning classification would allow a townhome-type development, at least to some extent. I haven't actually looked at that definition for a while, but there is the zero-lot line classification that, that could be available to someone.
Do we do that as just a recommendation, or how, I'm trying to, what is the vehicle for us to pass that information down the chain? What, what do we, what are we supposed, what would, what would you, you recommend? How do you do that, to just say, do we do that without any kind of recommendation, or how, what are we saying to the planning department, or...
I mean, basically, yeah, I don't know, do we, I mean, obviously, I don't think it would be in, necessarily, would it be in ordinance? And not...
I don't think we need an ordinance at this point in time, I think it would be, it would be a decision by instructions by council, direction by council to, to staff to hold on bringing those forward.
Okay.
At this point, just for a period of time until we complete the study.
But then something we would need a motion for, right, I mean...
We'd need a motion and a vote to get council to instruct.
And I think some, what are we asking for? You know, what, what are we asking, what information are we going to base our judgment on? So, we need to have a little clarity as to what are we asking them to do for their study?
I can tell you my thoughts on it, which I think, you know, I think I would want everybody's input on that, frankly, but my thoughts on it would be, you know, we have some workshops set up, you know, I think ultimately, we need, you know, whatever would come from an impact analysis, i.e. infrastructure, I mean, you know, we need to be making sure that is involved, you know, that's involved in it, and what that looks like. Some of that is going to be a geographic study, you know, as far as, how many do we have in one concentrated area, and is the infrastructure there to have a safe way to get around town? I mean, that's the kind of stuff I can't just look at a map and see, but I'd love for somebody who does that to show us, hey, this makes a good sense of where it should go and why it should or shouldn't go here or there, based on, again, traffic, infrastructure, safety, whatever it may be, lots of, lots of reasons. You know, ultimately, there's a, you know, we're, I think, the planning department is tasked with striking a balance of, you know, what different types of housings and zonings, and, you know, whether it be commercial or residential that we have in town, and that, I think, would be our part of it, too. You know, what does that total balance look like, and what are we setting ourselves up for five, and 10, and 15, and 20 years from now?
I'm, it's a, a good idea from, for the way I, some of the planning that we've done, or some of the conversation that we've had at our 2035, is that, you know, it's, the difficulty in planning is that you, you look at things that are very short-term, are, we are constantly trying to deal with what's going on in front of us, but we don't get that higher, and I think the analogy was used this evening, to get to 30,000 feet, to get high enough to be able to see the impact of our decisions, you know, and I, I would encourage this to be, this could be very productive for us and healthy for our community to, to look at things at a little bit broader sight. So, if you need a second...
Well, can I make it in the form of a motion at this point? So, I'll just make it in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion?
We'll say, you know, I, I think what we can do is, our, our first council planning session, I don't want to call it a retreat, is August the 22nd, so we make it, put this as, as a discussion item.
That's great, that's kind of how I had it visualized, too, it'd be perfect.
That would be helpful, because we want to make sure, when you ask for a, a study of the impact, we want to get your thoughts about what it is that you want studied. There's, you know, land use issues, there's infrastructure, there's...
Parks.
Resources on, you know, police resources. There's any number of issues, we want to make sure we have a good grasp of what you want to study.
I think the one thing, Mr. Tully had sent some good information on peer cities, but one thing that, you know, that we, we've studied that shows where there's clusters of apartments over time, that, you know, maybe one spread out here and there is not an issue, but where they're clustered together, that's where there are crime issues and service delivery issues, so that, maybe we look at what's the...
Service delivery is definitely a big one.
And I would add, staff has actually already begun some analysis on this issue, and our comprehensive, the draft comprehensive plan has a number of strategies dealing with, you know, housing in general, but on this topic in, in particular, so we can pull some of that material together.
Mr. Ross, I think before the 22nd, I think it would be good to get some information on, I can't remember what the, let's vote on this first, and then I'll, I'll ask that. So, we have a motion is second. Any other discussion? Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. I would like, if you wouldn't mind, maybe emailing the council members, because I have not seen this in some time. I know that several, several years ago, that, that the median household average price of a home in Murfreesboro was like 140-some-like thousand, and now, I hear that number is upper 170s, so almost 180,000. So, when we talk about apartments, I think it would be good to talk about affordable housing, and what that looks like as we go through and talk about, so...
If you bankers had given some more money, people could buy houses.
All right, any other business?
I'd like to wish our mayor a happy belated birthday.
Yeah, happy birthday.
Thank you. My birthday didn't count, because the anniversary was two days later, so that...
Watch out.
All right, thank you all very much, and we'll stand adjourned.